All right. Welcome everyone to the first of July 2020. Town of Newbury. Planning Board meeting, I'm going to read some introductory remarks as a preliminary manner. This is Pete Pecos, I am the Chair for the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. And so I'm just going to kind of roll down our list here, George Morris.
Yeah.
Larry Murphy.
Is it?
Leslie Matthews.
Here.
Woody Knight.
Here.
And Mary Stone.
Yeah.
Martha Taylor Staff.
Here.
Emily Noble Staff.
Here.
All right, anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond to the affirmative. Matthew Pullen.
Here.
Great, thank you. Douglas Duchesne.
Here.
You, Scott Cameron.
I'm here.
Thank you. Adam True.
He's not here at the moment, I don't know if he's coming or not.
Great. Christopher York.
I'm here.
Thank you. Eva and Fred Jackman.
I don't see them, but I'm expecting Eva at least.
Great. Bill D Francesco.
I'm here.
Thank you. Bill Robtelen. Or Batelli, I'm sorry, Bill Robtelen.
He's here as well.
Great. John Colletina.
Not here yet.
Bill Manuel also.
Also, and sad, not, not here yet.
Okay, great, all right. So, good evening, this is July 1st, 2020, this is the open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board, it is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020. Due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order supersedes the requirements of open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible and physically, physical locations. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. Your order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the planning board's agenda, which can be found in the planning board's section of the town's website. And identifies how the public may join, you may join us by going to http backslash backslash zoom.us and enter meeting code number 832-7141-3056, that number again is 832-7141-3056. Or by calling 1-929-2056099, that number again is 1-929-2056099. And entering the meeting ID number that we just. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. And the people will be participating by video and telephone conference. The meeting materials have been distributed to the board prior to the meeting. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak and if needed, share information through the screen, please state the intention. That after you have been called upon. So these are our basic ground rules under goal, before we turn over and go to our first. I mean, the agenda, our, our ground rules looks something like this as they've been constructed. As a chair, we'll introduce each speaker on the agenda, after the speakers conclude their remarks, I will then ask the members of the board to provide common question in the motion. For all attendees, except for members and staff, please remember to mute your phone star six to mute on you, on your computer, the mute button when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds or headphones with tablets or cell phones, please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes and I'll try to keep that in mind myself. Please be aware that video participants can see you and then you should take care not to screen share your computer, anything that you broadcast can be captured on the video recording. For any response, please wait until the chair yields to you and state your name before speaking, board members are called upon for comments to ease this process. If we, if the board members wish to, to enter into a discussion with other members, please do so through the chair. With regards to public comment, we will be having an opportunity for public comment and questions during our public hearings, this will happen after the board members have spoken. Then we will have the opportunity for questions to occur. I will seek questions and comments and we're going to do this by using the raise hand function for video conference participants, this function can be accessed by clicking on the participant option listed in your menu below the photo gallery. However, this, however, just. Just move your cursor in this area, if you don't see it, the window will open and display to the right. On the bottom of this, you'll see this patient area, where you'll see the list of phone video participants and hold on the button where you have the ability to click the raise your hand button. Using sure that your name is displayed, that will help us. When that, when you are called upon, please list your name, address with your question. For telephone participants, please use your telephone keypad numbers while in Zoom meeting by raising your hand by hitting the star nine. I will then allow questions and comments from the public as they hit the raise hand button in the order which they are listed. The system lists in order of the person who first raises their hand function. Each participant will call upon to provide his or her name and address as we indicated, there's a question or comment, or the applicant or participant or his representative an opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you are given the floor. Questions, the board will continue down the list of the raised hands column and again afford participants or the representatives the opportunity to speak, should there be a physical or electronic submission, submittal of questions or concerns, they'll be read into the record. And again, the participant will or have an opportunity to speak to that addressed question. Finally, my vice chair will make sure that I continue with roll call votes on everything that is to do. Right. So just so we're on the same page here, we're going to be having a series of public hearings that are going to be starting at 7:15. And until then, we will start with our agenda, we have a full agenda tonight, so we're probably going to begin with our submissions, we have four minutes to at least start one submission. And initiate this process, so I'm going to ask that our submissions, we try to limit that to maybe a 10 minute time interval possible, just to keep our meeting going on in a forward direction. So we could start first with Math, Matthew Paul, submission of an ANR for a lot line change. Between 156 Middle Road map, R23 lot 29 on Russell and Dean and 184 Middle Road mapped, R23 lot 26 on 184 Middle Road Realty Trust. Christine Trustee, applicant Russell and join me, thank you.
And so Matt is going to, I guess, describe this, I am going to attempt to screen share the plan.
Wonderful.
So.
All right, here we go. Yeah, so pretty simple, I live at 184 Middle Road. Russell Mead is, is my neighbor in a butter, he's at 180, 156 Middle Road. My property abouts the backside of his, I've been talking to him over the last few months and he agreed to sell me a part, a part of his land, which, which is kind of like the tail of the parcel. And if the, if we're, if we're able to do the screenshot thing, I can point it out, but the way it's, the way it's parcel set up.
Can you see that now?
See, not yet, it's coming up there, it is.
Perfect.
Oh, he calls it the megaphone parcel, it's parcel 29B as identified by Bill Holt, the surveyor. So parcel 29B, you can see, it was kind of an offshoot of his parcel, it lines up really nicely with mine, gives me a buffer behind the pond, it's a nice wooded lot. So I've been talking to Russell over the last couple of months, he's agreed to sell that component of the, of, of his land off to me, so we had, we had Bill Holt do the survey and filed the paperwork and that's why I'm here.
All right, Martha, do you have any questions or are there any concerns from your perspective?
No, I did review the plan, the, there were a few things that needed to be picked up, which they have been, which they have done and I believe it's all in order, there's no change to the frontage on either of the parcels, it's just a change, transfer area from one to the other. Both need more than meet the required square footage and contiguous uplands.
Right. Are there any questions from any of the members of the board, I'm just going to run down Larry.
No, I have nothing.
Great, George?
Yeah, I reviewed the plan very carefully this morning and I have no problems with it.
Thank you. Leslie?
Just a quick clarification on the size of the parcel that is being being determined on right now?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a little, it's 3.52 acres, so just over three and a half acres. We drew the line straight, we, actually, when we agreed to it, we didn't even know what, we figured, we figured it was two, you know, around three acres. Russell just wanted, he wanted that boundary line to stay straight with my stone wall. So we just, we just drew it straight off that and ended up about three and a half acres.
And that's an existing historical stone wall?
The, yeah, the wall, the wall on my property between my property and it looks like Danya Melonson trustee. That's, actually, all of them are existing boundary lines that we followed.
Okay, thank you.
Woody, do you have any questions at this time?
No, not at all.
Okay, and Mary, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, wonderful. Then I think from that perspective, I think we can accept this submission and entertain a motion.
So it's actually what the request is for endorsement.
Oh, an endorsement, okay, I would appreciate an endorsement motion.
Yeah, I would move to authorize the chair to sign or endorse this plan as a proven, an approval not required plan.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, then I will roll call Larry.
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
And Martha, and Martha, and Mary, your feelings?
Yes.
All right, and the chair is, is also, thank you. Okay, we were to start our public hearing at 7:15, I'm just going to kind of put a hold on that so we can just go through our next submission, I would anticipate this won't be a long presentation, so if we could continue along with our next submission. Which would be Douglas, excuse me, Douglas Duchesne. Submission preliminary subdivision plan 217 and 221 High Road map, R27 lots, 51, 53, 54, 56. Order deal, Elcher and Carl Brown lots 51 and 53, and Carl Brown, Margaret Brown lots 54, 56 applicant is Gadsden. Land LLC.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Oh, Mr. Chairman, good evening, for the record, Douglas Duchesne representing Gadsden Lane LLC, good evening. We are here this evening, first of all, let me introduce people who are with me tonight. Scott Cameron, our engineer from the Moran Cameron Group is here and I'm not quite sure with whether or not Mr. True was able to log on, but nevertheless, Mr. Cameron and I are here to do the presentation, as mentioned, we are here to seeking to submit a preliminary subdivision application to the board for a six lot subdivision plan at 217, 221 High Road, as you mentioned. There are currently four lots, we are proposing to merge those lots and to create six lots within the subdivision. If the chair allows, like Mr. Cameron, just to give you a very brief overview of what's proposed if the board desires.
Thank you. All to you, Scott.
All right, so I'm going to check and make sure that popped up. Everyone, and thank you for having us, good to see everybody's faces, even though on Zoom. I'm just going to quickly walk through this, show you it's in the plan set. So we had been working with Martha, always doing her, her good work. And I know she had sent out a couple of comments on this, I'll address those. But this is the, it's actually four parcels right now, you have the two lots, this is 217, this is 221. Single family homes and they have rear land that are owned by the same persons in the back of three and a half acres and 2.2 acres. This being on the easterly side of High Road, this slopes off down towards the marsh in the back, it's pretty typical. Mr. True did a subdivision a few years back on a similar shaped, long and narrow properties, very typical for the neighborhood. The proposal is to, before you as a preliminary subdivision, but this would eventually be a definitive subdivision to create frontage for access to six lots. There would be four new homes on the cul-de-sac and then ma- maintenance of the two existing homes in the front. Mr. Tree would be renovating the home at 221 so that that street frontage would, in effect, remain the same. The exception of the new road between the two and then 217 would remain, remain as is as well. We did include also preliminary grading drainage design, we can go through this a little more detail, you know, at the, at the meeting for this. And it's a pretty, pretty simple set of plans for the preliminary, we felt we provided enough information to have a good conversation with the board. Of course, with the preliminary phase, our hope is to flush out any questions or concerns coming into a definitive plan in which we would look to have the best possible plan coming forward at that phase. I will say the, the comments that Martha, the question she had was one related to the, the Great Marsh area of critical environmental concern. We didn't show it on this plan, but it does fall quince in with elevation 10 in the back here, so we will, we'll add that on to a subsequent revision, make sure that's complete. She had a question about the north there, we didn't label this magnetic north or true north. While we did start the survey, we compiled all the plans, we haven't put a true compass bearing on it yet, but I didn't want to misrepresent. This is being a surveyed plan, it is in fact a preliminary plan, it's non-binding, but we are confident with the lot lines as depicted. And then there was a question about the datum, this was just a typo that, that got through in the bottom, it is on the NEVD 88 vertical datum. One of the casualties of reviewing plans on computer screens, these, these are slipping through, but I'm, I'll leave it at that. Happy entertaining questions.
Let me see if there are any questions from the board. Larry, do you have any questions at this time?
Well, I'm, yeah, well, I'd look for some clarification now, are you submitting a preliminary plan for two lot subdivision or a four lots of division?
It would actually be a six lot subdivision, going from, it would be going from four existing two with frontage and two rear parcels to six new, all with frontage on the new road.
Okay, so that's your preliminary plan is for the six lots, that's what's.
Correct.
What's the purpose of the, of the plan showing the four lots then, oh, is that, that just to illustrate what's currently in existence?
That's, that's currently on the ground, correct?
I see. Okay, thank you.
George, do you have any questions?
Is the road intended to be a private road or become taken of a bug of town at some point?
Um, I think that is up for discussion with the board and what the board's pleasure is and what the, what the applicant's pleasure is. At present, we aren't requesting any waivers with this application, I know that's, that's typically something that we would talk about in this phase at the meeting. But we're, we're open to, we're open to discussion on that.
Okay. Anything else, Larry?
Yeah, actually, so the, the two existing lots. Is this going to create any non-conformities for either of those lots, the two with frontage on High Road?
Yeah, that's a good question. First started looking at this, we were of the impression that we had four parcels and you had two existing non-conforming lots in the front and then the two land, landlocked pieces in the back. As we were going through due diligence and looking at this closer, it became apparent that the, the common ownership, in effect, merged the properties because the front lots were deficient in area. So what our, what our purpose is with the subdivision is every lot would be fully compliant with the, with the zoning requirements, the zoning bylaw. The exception of 217, which is presently constructed very close to the property line, you can see here. And we want to look at be changing that building and do anticipate going to the zoning board requesting a variance to effectively change the shape of the lot, but leave the house as is and not create any non-conformity. And in a, you know, we know if push came to shove, we, we could take off the garage, it would just be a shame to go through in a house that really is separate from the project and staying with the owners, I'd have to through that, but we'll, we'll be going through that in the next, next step.
So would that be a variance or finding from the ZBA?
Based on the feedback we have received, it's a, it's a variance.
I have a question.
Thank you.
Listen. For the particular lot you're referring to, have the butters given any given, put their, their views on the table as far as like how close it is to the existing better properties? And to go down and, and make a subdivision. Are they willing to allow the existing building to stay in place or do they have concerns about it?
I personally can't speak to that. I was hoping Adam would be on, I know he has done some outreach with the neighbors, I don't know if that one in, in particular. But I'm, I've got a note here to, to make sure we, we check that, that off the list, I'm fairly certain the applicant has, has reached out to several people in the neighborhood.
Yeah, the reason why I ask is, you know, as it exists, it, it's a certain traffic flow, but in the change, it will change the traffic flow and just, you know, do the butters have any concerns about how that's going to work out? Thank you for your answer.
Leslie, anything else?
No.
Woody, do you have anything at this time?
No, I do not. I'm familiar with the neighborhood and I don't have any, no, I don't have any questions at the time.
Okay, wonderful, Mary, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do.
Great. Scott, thank you for the presentation. Martha, do you have any questions?
Uh, not at this point, I think there are some, some things that will probably get sorted out as, as the board starts to look at it. I, I, I will say from my personal point of view, the house at 221 is a very rare example of a mid-century modern house and my understanding is that it will be preserved through this process, which I think will be a plus. So please correct me if I'm misspeaking here, but and I, I know that the comments that I made will get picked up and revised set of, of plans as it gets developed further. So at, at this point, I think it's a question of accepting the application.
Wonderful. I would then entertain a motion to accept the application.
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion on the motion? Okay, not seen any, I'll do a roll call vote, Larry?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Mary, your opinion?
Yes.
And the chair is in favor as well, thank you.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Good July.
Yes, happy 4th of July.
You too.
Thank you very much.
Martha, could you pop up our agenda by chance?
I will do my best. Actually, I think.
If we can, if not, I can.
Yeah, I think I, I lost it unfortunately, I closed out of something, so I, I.
Subdivision plan for application for farm, that Farmview Lane on 68 Green. That the next thing on the agenda?
That, that will be it, I just wanted folks to know that this evening, we do have three public hearings that will be started and that will be discussed. And so they were just started at 7:15 and as we indicated, they will be, they're a little bit delayed. These hearings will be rolling one after another, so it's going to go from one to the next. I'm going to try to keep, if possible, our discussions to about under 30 minutes per hearing if possible. We just make best use of our time. So yes, as Leslie indicated, we're going to be continuing a public hearing for a definitive subdivision plan, the applicant for Farmview Lane, 68 Green Street map, R35 lot 21. Owner applicant, 68 Green Street Trust, the Jackman trustee, this is continued from May 20th of 2020. Martha, do you want to start with any open comments?
Not really, and this was opened and immediately continued way back when all of this started, so it has been continued several times. And so this will be the first time that the board has actually heard the application and heard a presentation on it.
So who would like to start with the presentation?
So Chris York is going to do that and I need to make him a co-host, which I am doing right now.
That will be so Chris can screen share.
Right.
Hi, hello, Chris. Good evening, how you doing?
Very well, and yourself?
Good, and you see that screen?
We can, is it possible for you to just enlarge it just a touch, and I know it's difficult to, to understand that parameter because we're, we see it a little bit differently than you'll see it.
Yeah, I can, I can enlarge it a little bit, kind of a fine, if it gets too zoomed in, too zoomed out. This one?
That's maybe back just one, that's, oh. There you go, perfect.
Oh, that one.
Okay, that will do.
All right, so I am Chris York with Millennium Engineering, representing 68 Green Street Realty Trust, it's the Jackmans, I believe they're here in the virtual forum listening in.
Yes, they are.
This is a proposed three lot definitive subdivision off of Green Street. I'll just kind of go through the plans pretty quickly here, one by one, start with the cover sheet, it just kind of shows the full review of the property, three lots. The, the zoning district we're in, the butters, some list of waivers we can go through, the time comes for that. Sheet two is the distinct conditions plan. Let's say 14, I can read the number, 14.9 acre site. It's mostly open, is a little bit of woodland kind of in the middle of the property, some little island of woods, but mostly pretty open for meadow and hay. Front of the property is the gravel driveway coming in off of Green Street, kind of just follows the property, goes down and around and up to the back. Existing barn on the property, there's a couple of old houses that are going to be, or outbuildings that are going to be taken down, part of this project. This shows the wet one line, 50 foot, 100 foot buffer line as well. Move on to sheet three, this is just to show some typical notes, typical cross sections of the road. Road is about 497 feet long. We have a 53 foot right away, 22 feet of gravel, I can get into in a minute. And then what, sheet four, just a lot plan, shows the three lots, the dimensions, the size. Smallest lot is a lot three is 1.3 acres, that's all upwind, lot one is 7.4 acres. Which is about, upwind about 1.7 acres, most of that is wet, lot two is five and a half acres, three acres of upwind. They proposed right away, they come in, it's 53 foot width. We'll go to greeting plan. This plan zooms in a little bit, doesn't show the whole property, but it shows, it's a proposed road coming in off of Green Street. Like about 490 feet ends in a cul-de-sac, we show three proposed lots. Like about four hundred and ninety feet ends in a cul-de-sac. We show three proposed lots. We show at the end of the road, we show constructed wetland takes all of the runoff from basically the high point of the road is stationed two plus fifty. Two plus fifty back there, flows back toward Green Street, rest of it flows down to the constructed wetland. It also takes the runoff from the proposed lots as well. This plane just shows typical building footprint of about three thousand square feet, which is a pretty big size. These three lots will ultimately be designed by another company for the septic. So there'll be more, okay, more grading involved for that. Those plans come along, those point I'd like to go before the board of health. And also for the in front of the conservation commission, I think at least lot one, maybe lot two, after with the concom. Lot three is completely out of the buffer zones. We propose a twenty two feet of gravel road, less for a waiver on that, one of the waivers. We're not showing any curbing, instead we're going to show grass swales along the sides of the road, both sides of the road. I don't take all the runoff, there'll be some driveway culverts under the three driveways. We all overland flow into these swales. Then flow into this constructed wetland, which is sized for the hundred year storm. That will take the runoff, that will now this, I think the road discharged to the wetland and then discharged out to the existing bordering vegetated wetlands. Now, let's see, this plan, I think that's about it for that. We'll go back to sheet or sheet five. Just shows the plan profile. Profile goes up to us type when it's stationed two fifty. Comes into the first fifty feet is at about two percent slope. We have a quick slope at six percent up to the high point. And then from there on back to the end of the road, it's at a nice one percent slope. We show, there's no, not much utilities out there. We show underground electric coming in off of the utility pole. It'll service all the lots, no sewer obviously will be individual sewer, septic systems, individual wells. It's really about it for any public utilities. And the rest of the sheets are typical details, constructed wetland detail, sediment forage, sort of a typical drainage details. Show the test information, typical erosion control, a bale, silt fence, silt sacks. That is it. I can take any questions and you can go on from there.
Martha, just a technical question. Was it on my end having difficulty? Because I had been having a little bit of wankiness with my internet tonight.
Chris was going in and out a little bit, if that's what you're asking.
Yes, yes. Okay, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't my end. And that's one of the difficult things of doing these Zoom meetings. Sometimes all of our participants, including the boards, have good connections and we don't. So were there any components that the board did not understand in that presentation?
Um, I I just have a quick question about the. The what the gravel road is actually the, what will the composite of the gravel road be made of? And my second question is, the swales for runoff. Were coming in, what, like two point five and they should be like at three point one? As far as runoff for stormwater management?
First, I'm not sure what the second question is. The first question, so instead of, there's basically no pavement. There's going to be twelve inches of gravel burrow will be the surface.
The gravel that you're.
Typical mess.
Like a component of like breakdown of tar and dirt and rocks and that kind of consistency.
Yeah, not not tar, but you know, small rocks and gravel sand.
Right, because I did read that, you know, it's it it requires continuous maintenance. And I I only question this because it is exactly what my driveway is made of, which is very long. And it's a. A component of a whole bunch of different materials that have come together that can form a. Basically, just a couple of grades below pavement. That, but the runoff on it is. Almost consistent, it's probably ten, ten, fifteen percent less consistent runoff than. Regular pavement is concerned.
Yeah, that's true. It's a little bit less runoff. It's almost, the numbers I use when I do that, the stormwater calc, that they're almost identical for pavement and gravel. But just a little bit of.
Yeah. And then pounded down and. Set into place and, you know, graded off, trucked in, placed, pounded down. And then pretty much it's like just a few grades below pavement, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So the other question about the swales, I'm not sure what the question was, but.
Well, I'm reading through the briefings earlier on, it was, I thought I had read that the. Engineer for the town of Newbury had said that the swales were a little bit off. And that would, the runoff would be a little bit. More. With the, the runoff would be a little bit more as far as running into the wetlands and things of that nature. So they would be like running from a two point five to from, which was a recommended three point one, I believe it was.
You might be talking about the slopes of the swell.
Maybe I am, yes.
That's one of the waivers we're requesting. Typically, the town requires three to one side slopes. We're proposing two to one just inside the swales. And to get into that later on, the two to one slopes are still immobile. You can walk on two to one slope.
Okay.
It's kind of tightens it up a little bit.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Chris, it's still not clear to me. Why is a gravel road the better option?
We've. Trying to keep the, trying to keep kind of a rural feel to the property, you know, it's a pretty small development out there in the rural part of the town. It's. It's. It's a little steep road. Just kind of, just to kind of keep a more rural feel to it.
And is it your anticipation that that this will be offered or that the town should accept this as public way?
No, this will be a private roadway.
Is that anything else, Larry?
Yeah, can you talk about the need for the waiver on the cul-de-sac dimensions?
Sure, that was, let's scroll back up to the. Waiver list. Supposed cul-de-sac provides hundred and ten foot sideline diameter. Same 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 reason, it's a three lot subdivision, it's a small road. Fire truck can still make it around that cul-de-sac, so there's no need for it to be so big. The reasoning behind that, trying to keep it as small as possible while still safe and able to be.
Do we have input from the fire department on that?
I'm sorry?
Do we have input from the fire department on that?
I have not seen anything from the fire department.
No, nor nor have I, so let's follow up with the chief on that.
It was suggested that without this waiver, you might be limited to two lots. Is that correct?
Don't believe that's true. I, I think we could still fit three lots in there. You're already a little bit funky to begin with, but I don't think that waiver, that waiver is not to get down to, that waiver is not to get from two to three lots. That was just a way for just to keep the cul-de-sac smaller. It doesn't need to be that big for such a small development.
And unless you have something else on this, how about the waiver on the underground water tanks, the fire protection waiver?
Yeah, we were just asking for a waiver on that. We are. Which one was that? Six. Each home will be provided with a sprinkler system. The, I believe that was further question, the fire department, and I think that came up during the, they commented on that during preliminary part of the subdivision process.
Yeah, I would certainly want to see something from fire on that.
Okay.
And lastly, if I may, what about the, I know you've you've readjusted the the exit, the roadway to get to a fifteen degree. Radius. Is there some reason that you can't further adjust it so you don't need that waiver from the thirty degree radius?
I've tried my best. Let me zoom in on. Sheet four, I guess, shows the fifteen foot. But I can't not push the road any further to the north because it's such a weird. It's a weird layout of the lot. It narrowed at the beginning, narrows up even more right here in the middle, or widens out. If already pushed this road, the first plan had no radius at all. The road was further to the south, which is as far as it can to the north. I can't go, I can't go any further than the.
Well, yeah, I can see it. It looks like traffic would be exiting at an angle, wouldn't it?
Yeah, or or I could bend the road coming into Green Street, but then it's just kind of a funky, didn't really want to do that, kind of a funky angle, kind of coming in at an angle like that. It's just that, it's just the right of way curve that's waiver. We still have radii on the gravel itself. It's just more of just a paper, something you don't see on the ground, it's just something shown on the plan. Build on the one side, but we cannot, we cannot fit it in on the other, on the south side.
Okay, thank you. That, those are all the questions I have.
Okay.
George, do you have any questions at this?
No questions.
Excuse me, Woody, do you have any questions at this time?
I thought I read engineer some issues with the south side drainage off the road. Was that addressed or?
It was, yep. He, so we originally, the the road, like I just mentioned, was kind of hugging the south side of the property line here. We did not have any swales shown before for the first two hundred and fifty feet. And since added the swales, I've added the check dams as well. So the last, the last letter from Joe from May, he was satisfied with that, this new layout.
That's the, that's the only question I really had was, because on the south side, that's that's deep there. And the south side neighbors, we wouldn't want to propose more water than they already get.
No, those swales will catch any water coming off the road.
Yep.
Anything else, Woody?
No, no, that was it. Yep.
Thank you. Mary, do you have any questions at this time?
No.
Okay, thank you. Martha, I have a question for you. Is this within a hydrant distance or is this completely well water?
I'm actually, I'm not sure. I believe that it's outside of the water distribution. Chris, do you?
Believe that is the case as well, yes.
It's like just beyond. Unfortunately, I don't have that that map here.
Yeah, I'm not sure where the last hydrant is on Green Street either, but. I don't believe there is one there.
So, so Chris, I'm sorry. Chris, I couldn't hear your your response to that. Do you have the answer to that?
I I believe we're outside the water district, but I don't hundred percent know for certain, but I believe we are.
I think that's the reason you need the waiver, isn't it, for the fire protection waiver?
Yes, yes, we are outside. That is true. I'm sorry, we are outside of the, I believe we're outside the Newburyport, it was two different districts. A waiver, the Byfield Water District and the Newburyport.
Right.
We're outside of both of those.
So you'd be sprinkling the homes.
Sprinkling the homes, yeah.
Reliant on their own wells.
Yeah.
So I guess we will need to hear fire comment. Martha, do you have any questions at this point in time?
Um, well, a couple of things. One, I forgot to mention previously, but it was brought up that that a preliminary plan for the subdivision was before the board previously. And was approved, obviously, at a much more schematic level. I do have a letter that was sent to me by Victoria Clifford on May twentieth, twenty twenty. Which would you like me, I would like to read into the record.
Please do, thank you.
Okay, so it's addressed to the town of Newbury Planning Boards, our A sixty eight Green Street definitive subdivision plan application. Owner applicant sixty eight Green Street Realty Trust, either Jackman trustee. And there are essentially five questions here. First is description indicates gravel gravel road entry into subdivision. Should this not be a hardtop surface to minimize dust, dirt on neighboring parcels? Second question is, who is responsible for maintaining the right of way, the subdivision road, before, during, and after any parcel sales? Third question is, note number three on sheet five indicates comprehensive grading, including grass whales to not adversely impact the butters. Does that mean that all stormwater will divert to the newly proposed constructed wetland and not directly to the pond via a butters land? Fourth question is, is lot one septic system expected to travel through the proposed constructed wetland? And the last fifth question is, should there not be proposed property line trees between proposed lot one and the butters? And again, that was from Victoria Clifford at seventy Green Street.
So I think we could direct those questions one at a time to Chris. Do you want those read individually, Chris?
Sure. Where was she located? Seventy?
At seventy.
Seventy, okay.
Right there.
Yep.
So perhaps the first question?
Sure, I remember a few of them, but I forget a couple.
Okay, so I'll read the first one again. Description indicates gravel road entry into the subdivision. Should this not be a hardtop surface to minimize dirt, dust on neighboring parcels?
Okay, I mean, we've kind of gone through that a little bit here already. All the waivers we're requesting. Go to gravel instead of pavement.
Would you like to maybe say anything about what road maintenance measures might be taken to mitigate dust and dirt?
Certainly during construction, they can, whoever constructs the road ultimately will take measures to, you know, make sure it doesn't, dust doesn't. Act any butters and neighbors, keeping the gravel wet, watering it down every day after the end of the day. No help with dust control during, once it's built, it's the hard packed gravel, so it shouldn't really. Amid a whole lot of dust, you know, it's a little different than just a driveway, if someone puts down some fresh stone, it's going to be a hard packed. Mass DOT gravel, so it's. When it gets compacted, compacted. Two or three times, it's going to be, it's almost, it's going to be almost as hard as pavement. It's not going to admit a whole lot of dust once it's up and running.
It sounds like an aesthetic issue. Is this correct? I mean, as a selling point that you don't have hard top, a black top, that you actually have a more rural feel to the area.
Yeah, that's the intent on it, to keep it more of a rural feel to it.
Right, but it's aesthetic, right?
I'm sorry?
Aesthetics, it's it's an appealing thing to.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
That was what I, as opposed to hard top.
Just a corollary question, will there be some sort of an O and M plan that will be part of the homeowner's agreement regarding road maintenance?
Yes, we do have an O and M plan as part of it. Double checking to see if there's anything regarding the road itself. Most of the O and M is for drainage structures, but. I can look into that for the road itself. We can add some verbiage into that.
I I have a comment to make on the road itself.
Living on that kind of driveway, I have like about a. 400 foot driveway that is constructed with that kind of gravel. And I like it because it is the, to me, it is that, that old world, that herb and that farm-like feeling. But if the neighbors, see, I'm on a. Different kind of atmosphere, but if the neighbors are going to be concerned with dust. During the dry periods in the summer months, there is a considerable amount of dust that is created. From travel on with cars up and down the road. Just from experience.
Thank you, Leslie. Martha, did we, did we make through all of those questions? I think there are five questions.
No, we didn't. We had four more.
Okay, okay, thanks.
This actually goes partly to the question I just asked. Who was responsible for maintaining the right of way, the subdivision road before, during, after any parcel sales? So that goes back to the question of a homeowner's agreement and an O and M plan.
So during construction, it'll be the contractor. After construction, it'll be the homeowners association.
All right. Uh, the next one is comprehensive grading includes grass whales to not adversely impacted butters. Does that mean that all stormwater will divert into the newly proposed constructed wetland and not directly to the pond via a butter's land?
Correct, yes. Any, any runoff from station two plus 50. All go to this constructed wetland. We treated, stored and treated, or outlets out to the wetlands. Then, then it'll go into the, then it'll naturally make its way towards the pond as it does now, but at a less rate of runoff and volume. So we know adverse effect on drainage downstream.
All right. Um, the next one is lot one septic system expected to travel through the proposed constructed wetland.
That, the house is located on the southerly edge of the property. The leach field will be way up here. It's going to be a, it's going to be a pump system. So when the time comes, a pump. Because the pump line can go anywhere it needs to go. So ultimately, it will go around the constructed wetland. Before it gets to the leach field.
And the pump system is run by. How is the pump system run? So that, you know, the majority of the citizens that are, are concerned with this, they can understand it.
Uh, well, I'm not a septic expert, but the, this one especially will have a, you know, have a septic tank. You know, that'll take the, all the sewage from the house. That's a gravity, that's a gravity line, then it flows to the pump system. And I think this is, I think there's two pumps inside the pump chamber. And then there's a probably an inch, inch and a half diameter line that gets pumped up to the.
Will this, this be a, a electric run pump system or will this be a gravity run pump system?
Yes, it'll be, it'll be hooked up to the, in the house for the pumps.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. And then the last question was, should there not be proposed property line trees between proposed lot one and the butters?
That's something we can look into. The Jackmans are willing to put up some trees. We can certainly talk about that. I can, I will. Let them answer that question when the time comes, but we're not opposed to it. If the butters feel comfortable, some screening on that property line, that's. Something we can look into.
Well, what's the distance between lot line to lot line that would? Force, you know, the butters to want to have a. A line of trees between the two lots.
Their house. One of the houses is here. Another one back here. It's. It's probably about 25 or 30 feet from the house to the property line.
Okay.
Somewhere in that range. I don't know exactly what that number is, but it looks like about. 30 scale, so it's about 30 feet of the back house, the front house is. 25 feet.
Thank you.
All right, Martha, have we gone through all those questions?
Uh, we've gone through all the questions, yes.
Okay, great. Let's see, do we have anyone participating that would like to ask a question?
Unfortunately, I can't see the participants with the screen share up.
So I see a question, I, I actually popped up on, I clicked on participants Martha, and then it'll populate that right in the middle of your screen. And so I see that Ginny has a hand raised. So after we see that, then you can lower that. So if you want to unmute Ginny so she can ask her question.
She is unmuted.
Hi, Ginny Nois Thompson, for Nois Lane, Newbury, Mass. I have lot two, lot two on the other side. My property is directly where they're proposing to put a house, which looks pretty close to the lot line. I would definitely ask that the contractor put trees. Separating me from the view of that house. I question why there's two leach fields right next to each other. That doesn't make me feel warm and fuzzy when they're on my side of the field. I question how, for years, we could never get perks on this property, and now all of a sudden, they're doing perks in January. And they pass. I guess I just have a lot of concerns about this subdivision and the way it's being proposed and the waivers that they're asking for.
Appreciate your, your comments and your concerns, Ginny. And again, this is an open discussion and welcome continued questions. And if you have anything supplemental, that if you want to put even in the form of an email so that it can be memorialized with this discussion, that would be helpful too.
Okay, I can do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I don't see any other hands raised. Is there any other individual that would like to have a question or a comment to the? And if you can't figure out how to raise your hand, I can kind of scroll through the screens here. And if I see a hand jumping up and down, a person jumping down, I can also do it that way. Even though that wasn't in our instructions.
Be flexible.
That's the name of the game here. I see Ray waving his hand, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I was trying to.
Ray, would you like to speak?
Yes, please. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, this is Ray, Ray Andrews. I'm at 66 Green. And I was, I was in not too long ago when I purchased the barn off the, off the Jackmans. So my question for Chris is regarding the utility easement. When I looked at the plan. My property, when I purchased the barn, has a deeded utility easement running to, to the barn off the street. And I just want to make sure that that utility easement is preserved. And that it's reflected in the plan.
Okay, let me look. We show. The access easement on the plan. I'll take a look at that. So you're saying there's an utility easement that runs. That runs through our property to yours?
That pole that I think. That is going to be moved to the far side of the street that. I spoke with Jack about it, but he said the pole was going to move to the far side of the street. And that the electrical was going to continue, I think where it is now, but I just, without seeing. My utility easement on the plan, I was worried that in some step of the process that I might lose it.
Okay, I'll take a look at that. I'll talk with the surveyor in my office to know that.
Um. Here's my question on the, this gentleman's question. If his easement was. To be. Endangered, let me just use for a phrase, wouldn't he have to be notified? By town government on the possibility of. You know, a developer coming in and wanting to use the easement for their personal reasons.
Isn't it a legal matter? Matter of legality?
Right.
So how could it be usurped?
Just to keep our discussion on track here. Martha, I'm not certain if it's my Wi-Fi. Again, I apologize. I'm not sure if I got Ray's first name, last name, and his street address. Did we get that for the record?
I've got it.
Okay, beautiful. Just for that clarification. And Ray, will all of your questions asked and answered to your satisfaction?
Where'd he go?
Oh, I don't know. This is this problem with technology a little bit.
Do you hear me?
I see he's still here, but his camera mic. Yeah, there we go, Ray. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Peter. Yes, that, that was my primary question. So thank you for, for taking the time.
And as I told Ginny, if you have any questions, additional questions, feel free to put them in the form of an email and send them to Martha, just so they, again, could be memorialized for any further discussion.
We had somebody else who had her hand out. Patricia. Oops, and I need to unmute you. Okay.
Hi, Patricia, thank you. Patricia Evangelist is, I'm on 7 Silver Ledge Road.
I can't, we can't hear her.
Patricia, can you either turn up the microphone or a little bit closer? Thank you.
Okay. I'm on 7 Silver Ledge Road. And my concern, because I do know even in August, that area is wet. I'm concerned that the perk tests were done in January as well. We're already asking for waivers. And. We, we don't even have a positive on, this is, it is well area. And there's wells that are going to be needed and perked into. So I have concerns that we're talking about waivers and it's wetlands. The perk was done in January. And I'm wondering where the runoff on the road is. I have, I have a lot of concerns with the wetlands over there. And I also could email that to you as well.
Yeah, that, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Uh, is there anyone else that has a question right now of the applicant? And I'm also going to scroll up and down here. Martha, I don't see anything. Do you see anything?
I don't see anything. I'm trying to get everybody in the screen so I can see if anybody else is raising a hand. Uh, I don't see anything among the people whose videos.
So what I think we can do at this time, Chris, is we can probably stop our screen sharing, and that'll allow us to populate everybody up on one field. One screen.
Okay. I'll share. Here we go.
Thank you. Great. So now we have the Hollywood Squares effect for everyone, so we can all see one another.
Thank you for the motion.
Okay, yes, thank you, Chris. Okay. Are there any other questions at this time from? Okay, Martha, do you have any questions at this time?
Not at this time. My suggestion.
A sidewalk perhaps?
A sidewalk.
How did I know? So for board members, it's probably appropriate, we're probably going to be talking about doing sidewalks and all three of our. Politicians tonight, so I just want you to kind of get comfortable with that, because we will be doing some walking. And let's tentatively look at a calendar, Martha. What looks like it might be a possible time, then we can kind of. Quick straw poll of members as to when that might.
Before Martha goes any further, I will just throw in any day but Tuesday.
Any day but Tuesday, great.
I think it really is up, up to the board. The Saturday is probably not the best day. But I guess the question would be whether the board would prefer a weekday or a weekend. And what the board might be thinking about in terms of a continuum state.
I'm going to see if I can get my technology here to cooperate. Doesn't want to at this point in time. Let me just try one more time. So I'm going to try to open up the calendar here. So would it make sense? Folks, just think about this, to have two sidewalks on the same day. We could go from. One location, say, just for discussion points from Green Street, and then we could wander over to. Newbury South Storage. So if that's the, if that's the case, we want to maybe block a three hour interval where we could do an hour and a half at each site. If that would be the case.
Lost your sound, Pete.
I apologize. My, 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 my internet has been very wonky tonight. I don't know what's going.
Yeah, it's, mine's been crazy for a few days, so get it.
So Martha, I was suggesting that we might want to do a plan, a three hour window where we could do two, two sidewalks pretty much back to back. And so maybe looking for possible suggested dates. I'm open. For recommendations from your perspective.
You know, I'm, I'm pretty open. I think it really depends on, on what works for the board members.
Okay, I'm going to throw a date out then. Probably shouldn't throw this out and really check, because I have a wonderful time of double booking myself and being totally. Totally in the wrong for doing that, but I'm going to suggest that we look at the 8th of July, which is a Wednesday. Okay, and I'm thinking maybe afternoon, maybe towards the tail end of the afternoon, so if folks have things to do during the day. Would a. Two o'clock in the afternoon?
Yep.
I'm going on next week, so can't do that. That's the 8th of July, that's next week, right?
Yes, so you're.
Wait, are we, right?
Okay.
That's okay.
Okay.
That's okay. I mean.
We'd like to have everybody participate. Okay. All right, well, let me just do a quick check. Larry, how does the eighth?
The eighth is fine with me. Anytime. I mean, if you wanted to do a three hour window, would you want to start that late at two?
We could start at one o'clock. Would that be better?
Well, I can do it anytime. I can do it anytime.
Okay, all right. So the eighth works for you. George, how's the eighth look for you?
Yes.
Okay, Woody, how's the eighth look for you?
The eighth is fine for me. I just want to remind everyone that one o'clock in the afternoon could be much warmer than maybe some hours in the morning. But other than that, I don't care what we have.
Point well taken. Thank you, Woody. Leslie, how's the eighth work for you?
I'm wide open.
Wide open. It's not a Tuesday. Okay, Mary, we can, we can beam you in remotely, you know. Okay, all right, now let's, let's, let's hone in on our hour. Understanding that it could be warm, it could be cold, we, who knows? We just know it's probably not going to snow. I don't want to go too late in the day because I don't want to deal with mosquitoes, folks. We want to do one o'clock? Are we up for the challenge? We can bring hydration packs?
Yeah.
You're going to need hydration packs. On the 8th, the temperature's supposed to be 88 degrees.
Oh, George, I love it. You're doing technology.
Future.
All right, um, so let's think. Oh, boy, this is a lot to digest. Okay, let's, let's look at three o'clock in the afternoon. I'm going to go for three o'clock, folks.
Three to six?
Three to six.
Works for me.
All righty, I would, I don't think we need that in the form of promotion, but let's plan and start. but let's plan on starting our first sidewalk on for the, for 68 Green at 3:00 PM. And we'll have to post that accordingly, Mary. Martha, does that give us enough time?
It's not, it's not considered a meeting. We don't have to post it. It's for information only.
So we're going to do 68 at 3:00 and the next one will be?
Probably at 4:30. If all goes well. Okay, so I would first like to pick a date to continue this meeting. Martha, what looks good for continuing this hearing?
So our upcoming meetings, the next one is July 15th. And we already have two hearings scheduled for that night. So we've got the golf center that night and the 105 High Road OSRD.
Okay.
The next meeting after that is August 5th.
Okay, do we have anything scheduled as of right now for August 5th?
No.
Okay. I think that would be a wonderful time to do our follow up for this public hearing. I would love to entertain motion.
I'll move, we continue the public hearing to our August 5th, 2020, meeting at 7:15 PM.
Second.
Right, is there any discussion on the motion? I've not seen any. Larry, how say you?
Yes.
George, how say you?
Yes.
Leslie, how say you?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Okay, and Mary, how do you feel about that?
Yes.
The chairs in favor. Very good. So we will continue this for the 5th at 7:15. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right. Moving ahead on our agenda, we're a little bit behind on our timing, but that's okay. So this will be a continued concurrent public hearing for the Newbury Self-Storage Expansion, 131 Newbury Port Turnpike, MAP R36, Parcels 23 and 24. Our applicant, Stoway Storage, New Reality, Green Business, Newbury Self-Storage, William D. Francesco, manager. This was continued from the 3rd of June, 2020. So this will be a site plan review application as well as a site application. We're running these concurrently. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Wonderful. Okay, so Bill, you have the floor.
Well. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yes, Bill.
We've, I'll let Chris take over, but we've gone back and forth with the town engineer and I think we've come to a, a conclusion. I was in front of the plant, of the Conservation Commission last week and received approval from the Conservation Commission. And this, this has been going on for quite a while. I think we started this in January, but unfortunately due to this terrible virus, you know, we are here where we are. And I'd like, Chris, why don't you give a little update on where we are?
Yeah, let me, the screen shared here again. Zoom in.
Nice to see you again, Chris.
Yeah, you too. Got a good size of the screen for the plan? If I go zoom out.
You can, you can zoom a little bit more.
Even more? I'll try.
Yeah, it's going to look very big on your screen, but it doesn't look that as big on ours.
All right, the last time we were here in January, I guess.
February, September, I think.
It was like a year ago.
Not quite.
So back then, we took the board, the plans, everything. The only outstanding issue from that meeting was the lighting, which we'll get into in a minute. Got a clean bill of health from Joe Sirwodka. His, his letter was dated in March 12. The only thing we added to the plan since then was we went out back in April and found a spot for the reserve area. The original reserve area was just off the edge of pavement. The existing edge of pavement where building I would be. So we had to go out and find some new spots to dig. We found a spot on the right lane. Not shown on this plan. We found a new spot out, not shown on the plan, but it is the very back of the gravel area, way out in the back of the property. Way back in this corner here. We found a new area for the septic reserve area. So other than that, and then the lighting issues. Ends are, if we go a few way through and get the board's approval on, but other than that, it was just the lighting, which I will find that plan, please, breathe. Bill hired company to do a new lighting plan. Like zoom in on this one, it can be hard to see. Zoom in as far as I can. There we go. So the blue, you can see it all. The blue numbers are the lumens. The issue was before, you know, we didn't want, you know, the board didn't want it turn with spillover of light into the wetlands and off the edge of pavement. We went back and we've specked lights on the buildings. We have a number of them on each building. We made sure to make sure that the light at the edge of pavement is close to zero as possible as we get to the wetlands. Wetlands on the direction is at the northerly side, the eastally side here. Further back, the constructed wetland is right here. At the edge of pavement, we have .100 up here. On the other side where the wetlands are a little closer, we're at 0. Wetland line is right here. 0, 0, 0.1. It was built, when we last, the last time, Bill talked about, you know, he's in a situation where we want to make sure the light, there's enough light out there for his, for his tenants. It's a safety factor. That's his most, it's his biggest concern. Make sure his people are safe up there, his tenants. It's kind of a fine line we've done, drawn here. So we have enough light in the pavement. We have 0 at the edge of pavement and into the wetlands and off the edge of pavement. And then lighting guy came up with this nice little schematic showing what it looked like. I like this picture. Shows really nothing beyond the edge of pavement, but in between the buildings, right along the sides, got enough light for safety.
Chris, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
I've had concerned people saying that it overly illuminates the sky in, you know, an adverse way. So are these downlights or uplights?
These are downlights. So the actual light picture is shown right here on the screen. Everything is down facing, dark sky compliant, down facing. But we're going to, the butter who was there last time, we'll talk about that in a minute. That was more of a phase one issue.
Right.
Which Bill and his electrician will get into in a minute. But this phase three, everything's, there's no whole light out here. All just the, this is one picture around the.
Because be, I'm only, I will be, I'll say I'm asking because the illustration that you're showing right now to me, looks like a lot of uplighting and not just predominantly downlighting.
They look at the picture, you can see where each light is shown on the building.
Yeah. But if you look between the aisles, the contrast between all the lights shows an enormous amount of uplight. So if you're on the exterior, it shows downlighting. But if you're on the interior aisles, it shows uplighting because the contrast within one another. And I, that's what some of the people are saying that they're, that's what they're seeing.
I will say, these lights are, these lights are, I believe, we just double checked.
We can address that, Chris.
Yeah, so I'm just going to, I'm just going to hold on for a sec here. So Chris, I'm going to have you go through your presentation. And when you're done with your presentation, what we'll do is we'll go down through the board members to have their questions. That way we won't have people talking over people, which is very easy to do in this format. So Chris, continue with your presentation. The board members are right on your questions, hold them, and then we can go back to two of them one at a time. So please continue, Chris. Thanks for the numbers.
Okay, yes, so these lights, and either these are wall mounted, like eight feet high. They don't, they don't emit a whole lot of light. They're not, they're not designed to. They're stuck to the wall, they face down, they light out. We go back to the lighting plan here. Say, back, the back building here. These lights, this, this pavement, I believe, is 30 feet wide. These lights only go out about 30, 35 feet. They're down facing. And they're eight feet high. They don't produce a lot of light. They're just enough to light up this, these aisleways. No poles out here. So these are the type of lights we propose all over the place. The downward facing, the dark sky compliance. These lights, these lights won't be seen from the street. Again, we're talking, we're several hundred feet back from Route 1. The issue with the site lighting is more of the phase one and the pole lights that are up front. We can get into in a minute. Bill is an electrician. Other than that, I mean, that was the two things that were outstanding on this stage. It's the public hearing, the lighting and the septic. Anyway, and then the wave is.
Hey, do you have anything else to present, Chris?
If you want us to go through the phase one lighting issue, we can do that. Or if you want to stop right there for a moment, we can do whatever you would like us to do.
Why don't you just go through? No, let's, let's keep it, let's keep it clean. Let's, let's, let's go through this piece and then we'll go through the phase one lighting. I'm going to go through the board.
Sky compliant.
I'm going to.
He says they're downlighting and they're not.
So hold, hold on please, Martha. So we're going to need to mute any non-board members until we can get through. Thanks, okay. Thank you. Larry, I'm going to have you start with any questions, please.
I, just a couple of things, Chris. I want to, I've got a list of issues. I think you've addressed most of them, but. So you're looking for a waiver for labeling trees over 8-inch caliber, correct? And you've identified the new septic reserve area.
Correct, yep.
Now you're going to be doing some blasting. I'm wondering if we need any special conditions such as hours of blasting and that type of thing. Not quite sure how, where the blasting is going to take place or, but can you talk about that a little bit?
I, I will, I'll defer to Bill. I believe at the last meeting, he said he was going to want to do some blasting. Last time, I think he didn't, his contractor did more hand chiseling almost. And it was just a tedious process. So he, I recall correctly, came up with the last hearing that he would like to do some blasting out there as part of the stage.
Martha, have we dealt with blasting before? I mean, do we have sort of standard conditions that are normally put in place for that?
We don't really. You know, recent, recent projects, we haven't had any blasting. So that's something that we would want to get, get some language for.
All right, something to think about anyway.
Yeah.
And Chris, there was some, thank you, Martha. Then, Chris, there was some issue about whether or not you were going to use a modular block wall for retaining wall. Has that been resolved?
Me, go through, Bill. Yeah, we, I think we decided you were going to use some block wall. Yes. This time.
That's what I thought I saw. Again, what it, I'm just looking to see if there are any special conditions we need to impose on anything here.
Yeah.
And I, I, if I understood your response, I think you agreed to use a modular block wall.
Yes, that is true. I just found the response, yes.
And you're not going to be putting up a security fence for the RV boat storage area? I'm not suggesting you need to. I just wanted to clarify the point.
Yeah, Bill, I recall at the last meeting, we talked about fencing up to a certain point. And after that, it's pretty thick wood. Bill didn't seem like it was necessary out from the back. Someone, someone was going to take a heck of a hike out there to get out back there.
Okay, that, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Larry. George, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I had a question about Leslie's comment on the uplighting in the depiction. I think the depiction is a little difficult to follow because in the aisles, it looks like there's a potential for uplighting, but that would only be by reflection from black pavement. I don't think there is any.
Yeah, these are not meant to be uplighting. These are down facing, dark sky compliant, yep. There would definitely be glitter off the pavement, yes, especially if it's wet.
Anything else, George?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, Leslie, did you have any additional questions?
I do. I have a question about as far as blasting is concerned. That blasting is like so much easier than most people anticipate it to be. So, you know, the experts will come in, they'll do the seismic graphs and everything that surrounds it to protect the butters. And it takes a not, a very nominal amount of time to do the blasting. And, and it's done in a very orderly fashion. Fire department is involved in it and it has to go through the, the planning board. So, you know, I, I'm a proponent for if they want to go and blast. So that's my only concern or question, whatever.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. Woody, do you have any questions?
I'll just say that on the blasting, because Leslie's bringing it up, on the blasting, it's, it can be quicker and easier than hammering on a ledge for weeks at the end. But other than that, I don't have any questions at this time. Everyone else asked.
Thank you, Woody. Mary, do you have any questions?
I've driven by the site many times at night. The lights seem extraordinarily bright. So my question is overarching, they are necessary, is this correct, Chris? You have to have them that bright.
And I think we're going to talk about their phase one proposal when we get done with this discussion, Mary. So I think your question's going to be answered after he does that presentation.
No problem.
Super. Martha, do you have any questions or concerns?
Not at this point, no.
Okay, all right. Just to keep our presenter continuing. Chris, I'd like you now to talk about recommendations you might have regarding phase one lighting.
All right, I will defer to Bill and Bill on that. They've been working together on phase one. Let me find a plan. Is, are you there?
Yes.
All right, Bill times two, you have the floor.
We're all here.
Bill, okay. Well, this is Bill Robitaille, and I installed the lights. And just to, for full disclosure, I've been in business for 43 years and the wiring inspector for 28 years. And lights have changed so much over this time period. The lights that we use now are not reflective lights. They're all LEDs and they're designed for the purpose. The, the ones on the building are downlights. They're eight feet, they'll, they're mounted eight feet. And that particular light will shine out 20 feet. And it will show left to right 20 feet. And they're spaced 40 feet apart. So that isn't an issue at all. And we use those in New Hampshire and Maine where they've had the dark sky compliance forever. They've, they've been.
So, that isn't an issue at all. And we use those in New Hampshire and Maine where they've had the dark sky compliance forever. They've, they've been way ahead of us in Massachusetts. The pole lights that we used are lights that they're shining, when they shine down, they're directed downwards. We did put knuckles on them so that we could turn them up and also swivel them. But in an horizontal position, they would shine straight down on the pole and would continue into the parking lot. And we put them on the outside edges of his property. There should be no light going backwards on those lights. They also have the backlight control option available on it, which is eighty-five percent spill reduction. They could be, we could tweak the front lights a little bit at night with a bucket truck and maybe change the direction so that when you're going down the main road, you wouldn't see it as bright. That would be, they are shining down and they, and they were downlight, but maybe we can move them a little bit. I think the problem with the road is, is you've taken an area that there was no light, and we've put all these lights up, and it just looks worse than it does. Out at the main entrance, you really need the pole lights so that you can get in and out of here from the entrance. And then we have another pole light at the gate where the, where you have to punch in to get in. Out back, they're basically spread away where, because these lights on the, on the main buildings only go out twenty feet. I don't really think we can do much with it, other than maybe tweak. I suggested that we needed them out back, but Bill said that he's not gonna do them on phase three. So, once you get out past phase three, there is gonna be dark areas once you get away from the building twenty feet. That's where I'm at. That's where I am on that.
These are the lights they use at, like on Route One.
Well, this particular light that we use is also what they use on at car dealerships where the road, the poles are right up level with the road. They shine in, they don't come back onto Route One or, you know, onto a main road. So, I feel that the light we used is the right light, other than the fact that when you're driving by, you've taken an area that was once woods, and now you just see a lot of lights. That's where I am on that.
Okay, so if I can just summarize for, for Bill, are you willing to get the bucket trucks out there, see if you can angle the current lights that are in place to see if the amount of light scatter onto the road and into the sky would be diminished?
Well, nothing will scatter up to the, the lights we have now do not go up. They, the angles that they're at, there's, there's not reflectors in these lights. The, if you happen to see these lights, they're LEDs. They're like little diamonds in there that shine the light down. They're forcing the light down. If, I think the best way to say it, but me moving the lights around would be just so that when you're driving down Route One, you, you might not be looking at the light. The light's not going anywhere. It's just, it'd be like having a flashlight shining at the road. You're gonna see the light.
So, so that just brought, brought a question to mind. And Bill, Bill one, Bill two, Bill one, what's the elevation of the building in comparison to the road? Is the, is the elevation of the phase one ten feet higher than the road? Or is it level with the road? I don't remember.
It was, it was built up a little bit. It's not ten feet.
Okay, so it's, it's, all right, so it's ten feet higher. So then when you elevate, when you have lights on, on the poles that go up, whatever distance they go up higher, so they're basically that much higher from the road perspective? I wonder if that's factoring into how we appreciate the current lighting on phase one?
Well, the finished floor on these buildings are, I believe, at one twelve. I believe the road is at one-ten. And this building that I'm in right now is thirteen and a half feet at the high eve and twelve and a half at the low eve on the back of the building. The other buildings are, I think, eight and a half feet tall, or maybe nine and a half feet tall. Yeah, because the lights are hung at eight feet and shine out twenty feet.
Okay, so I think we, 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 we understand what you're saying. And I'm gonna take it down through the, the board members to see if they have any questions about what's being proposed to remediate lighting on phase one. Larry, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay. George, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay. Leslie, do you have any questions?
No.
Thank you. Woody, do you have any questions?
No.
All right. And Mary, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Martha, do you have any questions?
Not at the moment. I know that there's one participant who wrote a letter and has some questions.
Okay, wonderful. Um, hey, we'll keep the screen sharing up just in case there's any questions on.
I can, I can answer that question. The, the very front building out front, the, you know, with the offices, that the finish floor of one thirteen and the road, and that area is anywhere from one-ten to one, one-ten, one-ten, three feet higher than the road.
Thank you. Okay, then I would like to open this up for anyone in the audience that might have any questions regarding this. And we're gonna see if we have any hands raised first. So, I see Mike Jaffe's hand is raised. Martha, can you unmute Mike?
He is unmuted.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much. Appreciate, appreciate the time again to speak up on this project. Um, I guess first I'll speak to some of the things that the applicant and his engineer have mentioned. I'll just go through them. Notes in regard to phase one as well as phase two, as well as the electrician. I don't think, to remediate the issues with, with phase one, which I believe everyone on the board is in agreement, is unbelievably bright and brightens the entire sky, not just the, the area that needs to be illuminated. Those lights should be dimmed. They're way too bright. It would be helpful to take the pole lights that are shining outward and shine them down. That would certainly be one step to help a little bit. They are, they're just way too bright. If they could be dimmed, I think that would be ideal. Certainly should be dimmed throughout the nighttime. I don't know why it needs to be that bright all night. As far as safety goes, if safety is that big of a concern, people coming there overnight, there should be security personnel. The light, the lighting all night that bright is, is, is an environmental hazard. It's insensitive to the environment that surrounds it, and it is just the definition of light pollution. Um, let's see. It's good to hear that there's no poles in that back area. I do not believe that the lights being proposed, the spec sheet on the lights, the wall packs, the seventy-two wall packs that each put up twenty-five-hundred-and-eighty-eight those are, I would be very surprised if those are dark sky compliant. I would, I can almost guarantee you that they are not. It certainly doesn't say so on the cut sheet. A dark sky compliant light should be used, but I don't believe this is dark sky compliant. The spec sheet also specifies a five-thousand-k temperature light, which is a daytime light. It is a very, very blue light. It is the least environmentally sensitive temperature that could possibly be installed. It should be three-thousand-k or below. The light is available, I see on the second page of the cut sheet, in either five-thousand-k, three-thousand-k, or four-thousand-k. So, it is available to be installed in three-thousand-k. And I, I believe that that's the temperature that should be used, but I don't know that the total lumens that are being used back there are, if it's consistent with what's out front, it's gonna be too bright. If it's less, then maybe, maybe it would be okay. Um, so I've given a letter to Martha with some backup. I believe she's distributed to the members of the board, kind of going through this in a little bit of a shotgun approach, but just going through it, my concerns are that the lighting that should be three-thousand-k, not four-thousand and not five-thousand. That's the most environmentally, environmentally sensitive temperature, dark sky compliant. You've got seventy-two wall packs that are poorly shielded. These are not dark sky compliant. They shine the light. There is a shield on the top of them, but they're shining the light outward as well as downward. They should be only shining the light downward. And I sent a cut sheet on what is considered acceptable and unacceptable. These are in the unacceptable category. Something from the acceptable category should be substituted. Pole lights should be fully shielded and aimed down and dark sky compliant. Now, I guess if they're not installing any new pole lights in the back, that wouldn't necessarily matter. But in phase one, I think that those lights should definitely be aimed down. Um, off-hours, I think lighting should be dimmed. And I don't know what off-hours are, because I know it's a twenty-four-hour facility, but certainly later at night, I don't see the reason why you need this many lumens of light for one or two people that come. And if security is a concern, maybe he needs a security guard. They're twenty-four-seven. And total lumens, total lumens, environmentally sensitive developments would have not more than fifty, fifty thousand lumens per acre for something like this. A car dealership might have a little bit more than that. A ball field might have more than that, but something like this should have fifty thousand lumens per acre. And I would ask that, and I couldn't figure that out from the, I don't know the size of this expansion area. I think it might be around two acres. If it's just the seventy-two wall packs at twenty-five-eighty-eight, then you're looking at a hundred-and-eighty-six thousand lumens for maybe two acres. So, you're, you're over. It should be a hundred thousand lumens. And I think that that should be, it should be decreased. The brightness of those lights should be decreased. Type of light should be used, should be dark sky compliant. And I would ask the board to, to take these considerations into account and ask for this plan to be revised. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And I think Martha does have your information in written format. So, thank you for submitting that. Thank you very much.
So, just for the record, that, that letter was dated June thirtieth, twenty-twenty. And I think since Mike just went off through the points, unless you want me to, there's probably not any need to, to read it.
I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't think you need to read it. I think I went through them item by item. Thank you.
Great.
And it has been sent to the board members.
Great, thank you.
Hey, I may, I have a question for Mike. Mike, what's your background?
I'm a commercial property manager.
Okay. Uh, I'm going to see if there are any other individuals that have questions that they would like to post to the applicants. I don't see individuals waving hands or poking hands up in our participant box. Bill, Bill two, I see your hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up, one of the reasons why there would be so many lights there is, you gotta imagine, each one of those buildings, there's, there's an alleyway between them. So, you've got to put lights on each side of the building and on the gable ends. When you say you've got like seventy-two lights there, you know, you've got five on a building, but then you've got five on the other side of the building, you know? I'm just bringing up why there would be so many lights.
There's eighteen per building.
Okay, I appreciate, what we don't want to do is we don't want to do back and forth. But, yeah, yeah. Between, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Bill two. Bill one, I wanted to just back up to our opening statements. I want to thank you very much for your patience throughout this process. And I know that Martha and you have had a conversation throughout this, and the whole COVID thing has really thrown a kink into how we've been doing business, but we do appreciate your patience with this and your consideration and taking a look at phase one aspect of lighting with this as well. Okay, with that said, folks, does anyone from the board have any additional questions? Larry?
No.
George?
No.
Leslie?
No.
Woody?
No.
And Mary?
No.
Okay, Martha, I think you're all set?
I'm all set.
Okay, great. I'd like to schedule our second site visit. If everyone's in agreement, that would be for the, uh, what was that date, Martha?
That was the eighth.
The eighth of, uh, uh, August?
Of July.
Of July. I, I'm looking at my notes above for the fifth of August. We're continuing, the eighth of July, and we would look at to be at four-thirty if all goes well. Okay. I would like to have a continuation for this hearing. I think after a site visit and a little bit more tweaking, looking at the lighting components, some more discussion, that would be helpful offline. Would we be in favor of going with the fifth of August to follow seven fifteen? Board members, Larry?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, George?
Yes.
Okay, Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Mary? Okay, Martha?
I, yes.
Okay, um, Chris, I'm gonna have you stop screen sharing, please.
Okay.
Thanks very much. Okay, I would love to entertain a motion for continuation to the fifth of August, that's seven fifteen.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Okay, Larry, how say you?
Yes.
George, how say you?
Yes.
Leslie, how say you?
Yes.
Woody, how say you?
Yes.
Mary, how do you feel about it?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. And the chair is also in favor. Great. We'll continue this for the fifth of August at seven fifteen. Okay, moving right along, coming in at eight-fifty. I'd like to continue our agenda with a continuation of a concurrent public hearing, Main Street Map U eleven lot one A and off Main Street Map R forty-one lot fifty-six, or applicant triple Q Inc. John Colletino, Vice President, continue from the seventeenth of June twenty-twenty. This is a definitive subdivision plan application of crossing one oh eight Main Street. Is the team on board?
Good evening, John Colletino, representing the applicant. Am I, am I seen and heard okay?
Hello, John.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Glad to be back. Thank you for having us. Want to thank the board for doing the Zoom calls to keep moving things along. I know it's not the easiest thing, and we really appreciate it. We're gonna use the same format that we did two weeks ago, if that's okay. I'll just say a few words, and then I'm gonna sort of turn it over to Thad Barry, our engineer, and Bill Manu, our wetlands man. And the three of us will be around the computer so we can share, but you won't see us at, at that point. But all three of us will be able to be heard and take any questions. I just wanted to sort of highlight, we actually accomplished a lot in the last two weeks since we're here. You know, we got a last minute reminder out to the neighbors. We have eight neighbors that we have contact with that was on our original Zoom call. So, we want to thank them and appreciate, you know, any feedback that they give us. We also created another color rendering, similar to the one that you saw at the end of last meeting, of the sky view, you know, of the subdivision. And those two color renderings, one shows five driveways and the other shows the shared driveways. So, we, we did that. We'll talk about that, because there seemed to be, you know, quite a few questions at the last meeting with that. Two, we had a great conference call with Jim from DPW Highway Department on the maintenance of the subdivision when it would be completed. So, we'll talk about that a little bit. And then we had a great sidewalk on, um, last Wednesday. And before that sidewalk, we were able to get the center of the road staked and the center of each driveway staked, including the, the shared driveway. And again, want to thank Martha and Peter for attending that, and also Bill from Conservation and Joe from Peer Review. So, it was a very good site, technical sidewalk for us. We were able to take a lot away from that. And our engineer and Thad was able to do some stuff since last Wednesday that we'll be able to share with you. So, at this point, unless there's any questions for me, again, just a reminder, it's a, a five-house subdivision. And at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Thad and Bill. And the first thing that we'd like to talk a little bit about is the shared driveway situation, because just to remind everyone, we're here for approval of the subdivision and also for a special permit on the shared driveway. So, I'd like to talk about that first and Thad to talk a little bit about that, and Bill to put up the two color renderings of how it would look each way. Thank you. And now, I'm gonna get rid of my mug shot, and the three of us will be around the same computer.
Okay.
Okay, um, Martha, this is Bill Manuel, and if you would allow me to share my screen.
Um, I thought I had done so. So have you tried?
Okay.
Our co-host.
All right. So, uh, this is our aerial rendering of the, as it would be constructed with the common driveway. So I'll, I'll leave it to John and Thad.
So as you can see, this, uh, aerial color, uh, rendering shows, uh, the common driveway that's going to be basically servicing, uh, lots four and five. Um, so if we go to the, what we did is we created another rendering that would show what it would look like if there was going to be separate driveways, which Bill can show. This would be the one showing separate driveways to lots five and four. Um, so we wanted to give you some type of way to compare the two in terms of site impact and length of driveway in comparison between the common driveway and length of driveways compared to having them separate.
Could you expand that image just a little bit? Because what we see is a little bit smaller than what you see on your screen.
Okay.
That's helpful.
Is that, is that, sir?
Uh, that is. Folks, is that good?
Not right.
Yep.
Thank you.
So again, this, this is just a rendering of what it would look like with two separate driveways servicing lots four and five. And if Bill can zoom back to the, uh, first one, zoom into a little bit. A little more, I guess, hopefully that, that'll help you see a little better. So it gives you a little perspective on, um, what the common driveway looks like in terms of the ultimate length for the driveway for lot four, which won't change in either case. It's going to be the same length if it's one driveway or, or separate driveways. And obviously lot five would have a longer driveway because it would be a separate, a separate driveway. And, and obviously there'd be some additional impacts to the wetlands. So we just, we just thought this might be helpful for you to have a better understanding of what the impacts would be and what it, what it would look like.
And through the chair, if I may ask Martha, have we received anything from the fire chief? Uh, because we talked to the fire chief, um, the, in the last week and he thought, um, his view to us, he thought everything was already taken care of, but he did say he was going to send something to you guys, uh, this week and just not sure if that's happened or not.
So, um, we have not received anything in writing from him. He did call me this afternoon and said that he's still, uh, reviewing the plans, uh, does have some questions about the wetlands crossings and, and, uh, whether they'll be designed to bear the weight of the ladder trucks. But he also does have some concerns about the common driveway. So we wanted to look at those a little more and then we'll be getting us comments hopefully next week in writing.
Okay, that, that would be great. And again, through the chair, uh, I just thought it'd be easier to take this in sections if there's any questions on the common driveway or the five separate driveways or anything that, that we've gone over so far.
What we'll probably do is we'll do all of our questioning at the end because we'll go individual by individual. So continue along, John. You have our ear.
Thank you. So the next thing that we'd just like to talk about is a little bit of the maintenance.
Well, we, we, we'll, I'll throw the maintenance and the drainage all into one. Uh, per the site walk, we're going to revise the stormwater drainage systems, uh, to, um, conform to what, uh, your review engineer would like to see as far as, uh, stormwater wetlands and stormwater, uh, drainage. We had a conversation today, was it yesterday, with, uh, Jim, the DPW, uh, director. And obviously maintenance of the, of these facilities, uh, was his concern. And I went through and described each of the, uh, maintenance requirements, which are very, very similar to, um, his, the MS4 permit that the town obviously has to get. Uh, street sweeping, which they, I guess the town in Duber has their own street sweeper, uh, cleaning the catch basins, uh, mowing the, um, drainage swales, which are all part of stuff that, um, they do as part of their MS4 permit. The only additional items would be the BMPs, the stormwater BMPs and the maintenance to those. And those really are very much similar to, um, the catch basins and the drainage swales. Mostly it's just maintaining the outlets. Take for instance, uh, there's a outlet that drains onto the property right now from Main Street. Um, that's something that the town has to maintain as well. And it's just simply making sure that it's not clogged. Um, leaves aren't there or doesn't get clogged over time. So they would be similar to the both of the BMPs. And, uh, you know, as I explained to him is that, that the best time to do that would be in the fall, after the leaves fall, obviously. Just to check to make sure whatever, that the, the pipes aren't clogged on the outlet or inlet. But other than that, there is not much maintenance associated with them because the vegetation, um, once it's established, you basically want to leave it alone because that's what really does the stormwater treatment is the vegetation. Um, they are considered stormwater wetlands. So the word stormwater, uh, constructive stormwater wetland does give, you know, the right to the town. If ever needed to, they can get into the wetlands and, and clean and maintain them, whatever has to be done. Um, in other words, they wouldn't have to get permission from the, uh, Conservation Commission because they are stormwater, uh, wetlands that can be maintained. But the ultimately it's the outlets, the vegetation, once it's established, you, you let it alone, you let it stabilize. And really, you know, that's it. Um, so he's going to, we left it, he, he himself is going to, um, review the revised plans that we'll be preparing, uh, going to be revising everything. And, you know, he'll, he'll look at those and give us, gives you guys his input back once he's had a chance to review those.
So the bottom line is since the site lock, uh, site walk last Wednesday on, uh, the period, engineer peer review, Joe, all his, uh, comments will be, uh, met, uh, and that's what that has been working on. Um, and those plans will be, uh, submitted. So as you know, you, you have your second round of comments, uh, from Joe. And 80%, 90% of those comments are already taken care of. And the other 10 or 20% will all be taken care of with, from what was taken from the site walk and, uh, what will be done with the plans.
And just, just as a note, there were a couple of survey items that we needed to document the off-site flow properly. And we spoke with Adam this week and he got back to me, actually today, and said the crew will be out there, um, uh, Monday, Tuesday to pick up the information for me. So I'll be able to wrap up the revisions, um, next week and get them in. There's a lot that I can do without that, that survey. So I'll be able to progress, uh, tomorrow, Friday and over the weekend to get things done.
So any, any questions at all?
Well, what I'll do is I'll, uh, go down and I'll ask the board members. Uh, do you have anything else to present to us?
No, that, 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 that basically summarizes it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, and I'd like to now poll on the, the, the board members. Larry, do you have any questions at this time?
Uh, yeah, I do. Pete, um, you know, you've asked for a number of waivers and it sounds like maybe you're working with the, with our engineer to resolve some of them. Um, but the most significant is the waiver of the length of the cul-de-sac. And I wonder if you can talk about, um, what the justification is for waiving the 500 foot minimum, uh, maximum length and where you're at if you don't get that waiver.
Well, if you look at the road layout itself, um, if we were to do a 500 foot cul-de-sac, we would probably have, um, probably two or three lots. So the length of the, the cul-de-sac provides the frontage and the access to create the five lots.
So we would have to conclude that it's in the public interest to have these additional lots then, I guess, in order to, to waive the cul-de-sac length.
Well, it, it, it has to be, you know, every, the financial burden is not the board's problem. But every project has to be, um, you know, financially capable. Um, and to put three lots in there or five lots, um, it's got to be financially viable. And the five lots makes it financially viable. Uh, three lots doesn't really make it financially viable. And the way the town, um, set the land up, uh, for auction, putting the two lots together, uh, doing the perk test, uh, and giving a zoning opinion, uh, that this is, is capable of a subdivision. Um, you know, that's one of the reasons that, that we purchased it. Um, so I, I, when you say that it's a substantial waiver, I respect that opinion. Uh, but this is a, a waiver in most communities that is, is not that big of a deal. If we're asking for a 2,000 foot road or something like that, that would be a, a different situation. Um, but I, I mean, I, I respect the opinion.
Yeah, well, I just refer you to our regulation and there are certain findings we have to make. And I, I'd suggest you, you, uh, you know, take a look at that if you haven't already and give some thought to, um, how we're going to make those findings.
I, I, I have looked at them and I'm, and I'm, I'm with you on what you're talking about.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you, Larry. Uh, George, do you have any questions?
Yeah, Larry just asked my question, so I have no other questions right now.
Larry? All right, George.
Great minds.
Thank you. From the two attorneys. Thank you, guys. Um, Leslie?
Um, my only question is when it comes to, um, tree removal, will the entrance, uh, exit be wide enough for the uh, equipment to get in and out in a safe, safe manner?
Are you during the, during what you, I would call a site clearing, when you talk?
To do like, uh, yeah, you're going to be.
Well, the equipment, you would, what would end up happening is typically what, what we do is we hire a tree clearer to come in. We obviously have to install the erosion control barriers first. Uh, we basically have the trees flagged that we, or the areas flagged that we need the trees removed. They actually bring their equipment onto the site, which is the, you know, the skid steer and the cutters. They cut the trees on site. They chip on site. They load the trucks on site. So there's very little movement in and out on a site. It's because there's not much, a, 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 a truckload of chips on a site like this, you might have, I don't know, two trucks leaving a day at the most. And we would, we would end up, we would end up building a ramp so the trucks can get in and out easily.
Okay, so they would not be, um, actual like tree lengths, um, being transported out of the.
They may, it, the, the amount of logs that go off is totally dependent upon the quality of the, the wood that the logger can determine that he can get a, that he can basically sell, which is very difficult for me to predict right now. They, right now, when they come in, they do an assessment themselves and that's what the price is based on, what they can sell, what they can get for the wood chips. Plus now they, they are able to grind the stumps. So, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a whole, totally different, different process. But it's either going to come off in chips or a truck with logs. And again, there's not going to be that many trucks going in and out in the day because it's just not, you know, there, there's not a lot of activity there with that, with, with those trees. It's just, it's just not a big area.
Okay, so my second question is, um, there.
One more thing, one, one more thing, one more thing. I just wanted to make sure that you're, there is one point I want to clarify for you is that when the, when the cutter goes in, we'll build a, a ramp road for him to get in and out safely so that he can move in and out. And we'll do some grading for the roadway so that he's, once he clears, so that we make sure that we're not basically creating a, basically a mess. Um, but, you know, so there will be some prep work that we will do to assist the, the, um, the logger to move in and out.
All right, so there'd be.
But those, those kids there can be.
Prior to, uh, extracting the trees from the property.
It's, excuse me, say it again?
Will be, uh, roadwork done to prepare to, to handle the heavy loads to extract the, uh, the logs, the, the trees from the property.
When will that be done? See, I can't, I couldn't see. Uh, yeah, a little bit of roadwork. Yeah. A little bit of, it's like a construction entrance. It's a, it's a very, it's like a construction entrance. They'll bring in some gravel, make a ramp, install the crush stone to, to control erosion. Um, it's, it's not going to be all that difficult to do. Keep in mind that prior to, um, my client buying the property, the town had someone go in with a machine and, and that machine made kind of a, an existing road through the site to do the soil testing. We used that same road when we went back in to do the soil testing. So there's one road that's pretty much already made there. What, what we need to do is make the entrance grade more usable for the trucks going in and out. And the soils are really good there. You know, they're not muddy. They're not, you know, they're a good, they're a good soil, um, to support heavy equipment.
And, and my second question is there is an enormous amount of, uh, rock and ledge in there. And how are you going to take that out? Are you going to chip it away? Are you going to blast?
Um, the, right, right now, um, a couple of things. Um, the rock that's there, uh, we did a test fit at the very, um, it's at about station 250 at the high point, right, right where Bill is pointing to. And you, if you walk the site, you're going to see large boulders.
Yep.
Um, we dug down six feet. We, we dug down six feet and it was not ledge, it was just large boulders. We're, we want to use those boulders because they're actually, I know this is going to sound ridiculous, but they're actually beautiful rock. We're going to use those rock to build the retaining wall to minimize the impact to that area. And if you also walk the site, you're going to see some interior walls of old farm walls that again, they're, you know, it's, it's beautiful rock. Uh, we're going to preserve that rock and use it for creating the landscape features in the headwalls around the BMPs. And at the end of the cul-de-sac, existing are two very large boulders, extremely large. Um, one of them is going to remain in place because it's, it's outside of the, uh, road construction. The other one, we're going to move over and have that become part of that BMP number eight. But that BMP will be removed, but that boulder will be removed there because it's, again, it's a, just a nice site feature. So we're going to be preserving the rock, using it on site, um, because again, it's, it's, it's nice stuff.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your, uh, information.
Thank you, Leslie. Um, Woody, do you have any questions at this time?
I'm curious as to the size of lot one. Is lot one the smallest lot out of the five and?
Of the five. Lot one's the small one, yes.
The, the, you do, do you know the square footage of it or?
Uh, let me get the plate. I don't know, like, we can get you the number.
It's. Lot does run to the road, right?
Yeah, it's 40,000, 377 square feet.
Right.
It's about, just barely over 40,000.
Okay, so that's why lot one runs to the road because you need that space to make that lot.
Yeah, we need that area to make lot one viable for two reasons. One for the area, obviously, and one for the upland count too. You have to have a certain percentage of them.
Okay, great. That answers my question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Woody. Uh, Mary, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay, thanks, Mary. Um, Martha, the question I have for you is, um, we have not heard back from, do we have a written response back from DPW as to this, uh, this plan at this point in time?
Uh, we do. We received that this afternoon and essentially it says what they, they.
Uh, we do. We received that this afternoon and essentially it says what they, they said earlier. It says, "To whom it may concern, this letter is to inform you I have some concerns with the maintenance of the stormwater design that the town would be responsible for after the road is accepted. I'm going to wait until I get the revised plans for any questions I might have and see if they are answered in the revised plans. Sincerely, James Saret, DPW Director."
Thank you, and we, we don't have our written response from our fire department.
Not yet.
Okay. Okay, uh, let's see, is there anyone in the audience that has a question for this, uh, this situation? This application right now? Well, let me see, I don't see any hands raised. Let me see if I see any folks jumping up and down the screen. Larry, you don't, you don't have to jump up and down. I see you're not, just kidding. Yes, it is getting later. Okay, here we are, clocking at nine fourteen. I think it's appropriate to talk about a site visit. And I think everyone probably agree with that. Uh, I'm looking at the 16th of July, which would be a Thursday. Okay, I'm just going to kind of pull down. Larry, is that good with you?
Uh, give me one second, Pete.
Sure thing.
July 16. Yeah, we have a meeting that night, but otherwise I'm free.
The 16th, we do?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Oh, ZBA, never mind. That's a ZBA regular meeting. Yeah, the 16th is fine.
Okay, um, George, would the 16th work for you?
Yeah, okay, I don't do sidewalks on unclear land.
Yes, I understand. Thank you, thank you for reminding this old timer over here. Wesley, would that work for you?
Very well, yes.
Woody, would that work for you?
Yes.
Okay, Mary, would that work for you?
Yes.
Martha, would that work for you?
Yes, it would.
Okay, so now we just have to pick the hour. Do we want to look, it's going to be an unclear area. It's going to be a little buggy, folks, but not too buggy. And we don't want to do it in the heat of the day. Would we want to try a three o'clocker?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Larry, three o'clock? Okay, George, three o'clock. Oh, I'm sorry, George. Leslie, three o'clock?
Yes.
Woody, three o'clock?
Yes.
Mary, three o'clock?
Yes.
Martha, 3:05?
No, I'd say, let's see.
Three o'clock on the 16th, looks like we're in business. Okay. We're going to need to continue this hearing because we still have to hear from our fire, and we have to do a sidewalk and get a little bit more insight. So would it make sense to?
Chair, can I just ask you a question?
Sure thing.
I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt. I probably should have done it before you scheduled the sidewalk. We were wondering if it's possible on the shared driveway situation, it'd be very helpful to our team. If the fire department comes back, if the chief comes back, that he doesn't have a problem with the shared driveway and the concerns that he has are taken care of. We just want to get a feel from the planning board, their feelings on it, if he's okay with it. Because it sort of plays a big role on if we're going with five separate driveways or the shared one as, as we continue. So we just threw the chair, get a, get a feeling from the board.
Well, I wouldn't want to give you a false sense of direction without having the input from the fire department to tell you the truth. Because that would really direct the board members into how they're feeling. Because public safety is always our primary concern. So if we were to say, hey, yeah, we like this idea, and the fire department comes back and says no, then you're going to be going down a path that we probably don't have to go down. So I would say wait till we hear from a, a fire service, let them kind of guide us and give us the insight that's necessary to make the best public safety decision. That would be, that'd be the easiest for you, I think, John.
Uh, I, I agree with everything that you said. Public safety is our number one concern, and that's why I preped my question with, if only the fire department agrees to it. But if, if we can't get a feel, we can't get a feel.
I, 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 I hope you appreciate, just so we don't give any mis, misdirection or mis. Okay, then I think it probably makes sense to continue this hearing. Would, it would probably be dynamically smooth to go with the 5th of August, and we could do the continuum to continue this 7:15 rolling. With that being the case, would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, I'm going to ask that you drop the screen sharing if we could, or we just go back to our regular screen?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, John, appreciate it. Um, okay, I'll do a roll call. Larry, how say you?
Uh, yes.
George, how say you?
Yes.
Uh, Leslie?
Yes.
And Woody?
Yes.
And Mary, your feelings?
Yes.
And the chair is in favor. Great, thank you, everyone. So 9:20 for that. Beautiful. Okay, continuing on our agenda. Old business of, uh, actually, this isn't too bad, Martha, we're only 20 minutes off. We have two items on our agenda which were scheduled for nine o'clock. They are old business, 105 High Road Preliminary Subdivision Plan Map R48 Lot 49 Owner/Author and Sandra Costanas, Advocate DePiero LLC. And our second old business is 277 High Road Preliminary Subdivision Plan Map R11 Lot 70 Owner/Second 277 High Road LLC. Where do we stand with these?
So these, as you may recall, these were submitted to the board back in, in April. The primary purpose of both of these plans, which showed two lot subdivisions on both 105 High Road and 277 High Road, primary purpose was to freeze the zoning for those lots in anticipation of some zoning changes that were being proposed for town meeting that, obviously because we couldn't hold the hearing, didn't, didn't go forward. So I think the, the, the question really is, what do we do with them? Is it appropriate to, to take action on them? And what action would be appropriate? I, I started an email to town council and was never able to finish it today to get any input from her. Uh, I did have a meeting with Arthur Costonas yesterday and Mark DePiero and Steve Sawyer. Uh, this topic came up and I think Mark was going to touch base with their attorney to see if he had any input or suggestions. So I could see if, um, Arthur would like to, because I see he's here, if he would like to unmute himself, if he has any input on that, if that's all right with the chair.
Sure, that'd be fine. Arthur, would you like? Make a, you have to unmute yourself first.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, guys. Hello.
Hi, Arthur.
Uh, I did reach out for, um, well, good evening, board. I did reach out for Mark Griffin today, had a brief conversation with Mark. And he suggested that we do nothing, just let it sit. Arthur?
Okay.
That was his suggestion. Perhaps he could compare notes with, uh, town council on that, but that, that was his quick answer to me. On behalf of that.
Wonderful.
All right, so I could similarly, you know, finish reaching out to town council and see if she agrees with that or what other, what other guidance she might have on, on how to deal with these.
That'd be wonderful. Okay, well, thank you very much, Arthur. Appreciate the update.
Of course. Have a nice evening.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we'll, we'll do that with both, uh, both of those agenda items, Arthur, Martha?
Yes.
Okay. Called you Arthur, Martha, I apologize.
Actually, it's not the first time that's happened in my life.
Alrighty, so now we're basically almost on time to new business and I see the word none next to that.
Peter, I'm excusing myself.
Thank, George, thank you very much. Appreciate your participation. I am, I am going to throw something out there just for discussion, folks, just to think about something. And this was, uh, something that I kind of, uh, ran by Martha very, very quickly and kind of wanted to put it out there as a, as a maybe a, um, an opportunity for ownership in certain projects. So we have basically, what, three, four, five, five projects on, on the table. Uh, and there's one, two, three, four, five, six of us. And I was wondering if it would make sense, we don't have to, we don't have to come up with an answer of this, uh, for each one of these projects, for one of us to help shepherd the process. The kind, kind of the go-to board member, uh, to, you know, to, uh, that could get the ear of Martha, come up to speed with everything so that we could form little work groups, uh, so that we each know one project inside and out. Because as you know, the nuances of each project are very, very different. We get an overview as a board, but some of the ins and outs can actually be addressed, uh, through detailed thinking. And this would allow the opportunity to do, to do the detailed thinking in coordination with Martha and maybe with some supplemental information. So, Miss Tha, what do you think, folks?
So how, how would you, how would that work, Pete? I'm a little unsure.
I would find the most difficult, challenging application, Larry, and I would say that's yours.
No, all right, you're not, you're not creating a subcommittee.
No, 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 no.
Okay, because my, if, if you're creating a subcommittee, that subcommittee would be subject to the open meeting law, they have to be posted meetings, yada, yada, yada. But I don't know, just one individual as a point person, that's fine.
Correct, correct, yeah.
So would you be giving us, uh, the guidelines for each particular project that you're thinking about and then we can move forward on that?
Well, you know, I think this is kind of, the thought is, it's, it's an opportunity to, to own, take ownership, leadership, and delve deeper into the project itself, into a project. Because it takes a while to get comfortable, you know, being on a board, uh, and then it gets really comfortable to know all the nuances of it. And so this is kind of a way of, if you will, immersion into a project. Uh, so that was the thought process.
Uh, I'm, I'm on board for that.
Yeah, I am too. I think it sounds good.
Woody?
I think it's a great idea.
Or excellent. Well, crayons and whiteboards at our next meeting. Just kidding. Um, good, I'll, I'll ask George what his thoughts are, and maybe this might be just a model that we can explore, you know, working in the future, because we are going to be getting busier as, as a board.
So what you'll do is provide us with each and every, uh, project that is before us at this point in time? And will this be a pick and choose or?
I don't, I don't, I don't know yet, Leslie. This was kind of, kind of just polling to do a litmus test to see if people thought it might be a good idea, and then we can work out the kind of the details going down the path.
Did we hear from Martha owners?
Martha?
Are we? Don't want to increase her workload unnecessarily.
Well, the, well, the intention is that we might actually be able to help offload her.
Okay.
If it's done the right way.
Yeah, I think so too.
That's, that's the kind of the, the end, the end game that I was kind of having in mind. So Martha, what do you think about that?
No, I think, you know, I think if, uh, if everybody's willing to, to do it, we could try it.
It's something we, we haven't done in the past, then you know, you try different innovative things to see what works.
I think it might be a matter, you know, for the different projects, the board member responsible for site plan review might, might get much more deeply into the site plan and view rules and regs and that kind of stuff to see. See how it complies, how it doesn't comply. Same with subdivisions.
Yeah, and I, you know what, I actually look at this as not just taking, uh, some of the burden off of Martha's shoulders, but, um, this would be a really good educational, um, value for the rest of us as well.
I agree, I agree, Les. Good. All right, I, uh, thank you for the input. Um, I don't think we have a financial report.
We don't.
So now we're actually going to propose ourselves into the town planners' report at 9:30 and we're 9:27, so we're ahead of our schedule.
At this point, I really don't have much to report. You know, we've got these projects ongoing, we've got the 105 High Road OSRD project. That public hearing will be starting on the 15th, along with the golf center that night. Joe Sirwodka has done one round of review comments on the 105 High Road, which has been passed on to the applicant. So at this point, I don't, don't really have anything else to, to add.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful. Uh, thank you very much for the planners' report and moving right into liaison. Wesley, do we have anything from the board selectmen? I don't think they've met since our last.
Nothing from the board of selectmen, uh, because, uh, the last meeting was for, uh, the annual town meeting, so.
Reorganizing right next week or, or, uh. Okay, ZBA, Larry, do you have anything?
No, I, I think I reported last time. Well, the biggest thing on their agenda, of course, is the 40B Cricket Lane Pearson, and, uh, that was continued at the applicant's request until July 30th. They're holding a special meeting for that.
Um, and I'm trying to see. I think I reported on Concom last month, so that was done. MBPC, Martha?
Uh, just briefly, the MBPC had its last, uh, last meeting of the fiscal year on the 18th, voted new board of officers and takes the summer off, so will start up again in September.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful. Um, I see that we have a select, uh, person in the, uh, audience. Is there anything that Alicia would like to say? I think I need to unmute her.
Um, no, Alicia, you have to unmute yourself if you'd like to say anything.
I don't hear anything? Okay, wonderful. Um, that being the case, I would entertain a motion at 9:29.
Uh, Pete, one other thing.
Yes, sir.
I just realized, um, as we were looking at the scheduling of the sidewalks and all, I'm likely going to be away for the August 19th meeting, so I just wanted to let you know that.
It's 19.
Unless New Hampshire is completely shut down. We, we actually have a vacation schedule up there.
Okay, well, you can send us the, the information and where we need to be, and we'll, we'll be happy to bring cooked food.
Okay. Although maybe I can zoom it if we're still doing Zoom meetings, maybe that's a possibility.
All right, well, okay, so I see 9:30. Uh, I would love to entertain a motion.
I would love to move to adjourn.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion on this motion?
I think we should be meeting for a couple more hours.
You know, we're, we're 10 minutes ahead of our schedule, but I'm okay with that. Okay, uh, Larry, how say you?
Yes.
Okay, Leslie, how say you?
Yes.
Woody, how say you?
Yes.
And Mary, how do you feel about this?
Yes.
And the chair is all in favor. I want to thank everyone. Uh, we had to go through a lot of things, a lot of detail, uh, but I appreciate the patience and a long day and a lot of hours. Thank you very much, everyone.
Right?
Uh, yes, uh, first sidewalk will, will be the eighth.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, there'll be an email going out too.
Yeah, I'll send a reminder out to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Have a good evening.
Everybody.
Good night.
Good night.